The meeting of the Makiki Neighborhood Board, February regular meeting is called order at 6:04 PM. The first item on the agenda is the Honolulu Fire Department. Do we have a representative with us this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Honolulu Police Department.
Hello, everyone. Lieutenant Segusio, representing District One, Community Responsibility. Hope everybody's week is going well. I apologize for today. I do not have the statistical information for the past month of January. There was some glitch in the software. I could, I was trying to extract as much as I could, but rather than giving the board a half-baked report, if they would indulge me, so I can have it by before business, end of business day tomorrow. And if I can email it to Chair Ross and Vice Chair Char, and if you guys could disseminate that to the following board members, that would be greatly appreciated.
Please send it to Logan as well.
Okay, Logan, okay.
Thank you. Please continue.
And then, also, I just wanted to give the board several updates. So obviously, there were several questions last week in regards to the RCP or the residentially challenged persons in the area of Peakoi and Pensacola. So we're currently, so the point in time count is done at this point in time, if I'm not mistaken. So we're starting up SPO SNOs again. We have one scheduled for the area of Kakaako. I'm gonna try to see if I can squeeze in Peakoi and Pensacola as well. But we just want to make sure that we take care of the initial, initial situation at Kakaako. So limited resources, so if there's room enough in the trucks and the dumpsters and stuff like that, then we'll head over to that location. Second thing, I wanted to address Mr. Clink's question in regards to that one particular vehicle parked on Heulamakiki. In the past three weeks, I think we have also cited that vehicle another, another time. I'm gonna go check it in the following week and see if it's still parked at that location or still parking at the location. And I'll issue another citation and see if the courts would try to see if they can adjudicate it. There was another question from Dan. I apologize for the last name wishing, wishing lad. In regards to the racings on the mountain, we started seeing an influx of a lot of motorcyclists going up onto the mountain and doing a lot of these racing and speed runs and stuff like that. So we took, we started an initiative of replacing white cars and unmarked motorized vehicles up at the lookouts and in particular areas. We won't discuss exactly which areas. They're gonna be issuing more citations and trying to see if we can stop this activity from occurring. I just wanted to also let the board know that there's gonna be the, this coming weekend, President's Day, Monday, Great Aloha Run. It's gonna be on February 19th, Monday. So we're gonna see rolling road closures starting at 3:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the morning. So it would be best to just avoid the area unless you're coming down for the race, yeah. But avoid there as much as possible due to heavy traffic and numerous rolling road closures. So the safety tip of the month is gonna be, I'm gonna be talking about, it's more of a safety tip awareness. Yeah, it's the uptick of thefts in Kia's and Hyundai vehicles. Just asking our community members to be a little bit more vigilant and take more proper precautions. I'm putting on alarms, steering wheel clubs, or even parking in more secured areas. We're also asking our community members to refer to the dealership in regards to these vehicles, and you can find them on Google which years are affected. But reach out to the dealership to see if they can do a software update so that they could mitigate and help this problem to stop these thefts. Just, just some of the numbers that we're seeing, yeah. So the severity of these thefts just alone in D5, which is the Kali area, and D1, which is the greater downtown Honolulu area, account for 52% of all of these motor vehicle thefts. And just like what was delivered to in Neighborhood Board Eight, one of the board members realized that these vehicles are also being used in the smash-and-grab burglaries and thefts, yeah. So it's not only the thefts of the vehicles that are very severe. It's the secondary, third, and fourth level crimes that are committed with these vehicles that are very concerning. At this point in time, I'm gonna yield back the rest of my time and take any questions from the board members and the public attendees.
Thank you very much for that thorough report and giving us that information. I would certainly look forward to the crime statistics as well. Do we have any questions from any board members present at this time? Please go ahead.
Again, I think that my fellow board member, Eric Salassa, has been the one who has been talking most about the problem of the racing around Round Top. But I, you know, it affects me as well. You know, I live near Makiki Heights Drive, and I spoke, and I think last time, at the last meeting, you were talking about the difficulty in going after these guys unless you catch them in the act. But I was actually speaking to a judge at the IC, and she was saying, if we, you know, if we're, if the people in the community are willing to testify with regard to this racing, you know, maybe, maybe, you know, we can push this forward. And so I'm just, you know, if you have any comments or suggestions as to how we can go about doing that.
A little bit difficult, because usually when these racers, they're going past your residence, it's really quick. Unless you get a license plate and you can positively identify the driver, it's gonna be really difficult for us to issue a citation on behalf of you being a witness, yeah. But we, just like I said, law enforcement, we think out of the box, majority of the time, our citations are normal parking citations for parking in no parking areas up on the, on the, on the lookouts. We've also issued citations for detrimental drug, which is usually in correspondence to marijuana smoking, those kinds of things, or prohibitions, which is alcohol. We've done even, in fact, DUI arrests up there after these cars end up crashing into the bushes or into a trench or whatever. So we're out of the box. Majority of the citations up there aren't for racing. Majority of it could be for exhibition of speed, parking, just like I said, prohibitions when we, when we see like alcohol in the vehicle. We did make a DUI arrest in the last year or so, if I can remember anyway. So, yeah, it's very difficult, but community engagement in regards to calling when these racers are going up is a good thing, so that we can also go up at the same time, and then we can catch them in the act in regards to those other types of violations, yeah.
Okay, well, I mean, if you, if you could just let us know what kind of evidence or, you know, photographs or videos or whatever we can provide that can help sort of make, you know, implement a more permanent solution. And I, it doesn't seem like these citations are really deterring these guys from continuing this activity.
If they change the law and they can impound these vehicles like in mainland municipalities, I think that could affect these guys going up there, but at this point in time, there's no real laws in place for us to do that unless it's a total reconstruction violation, yeah. Okay.
So one thing I want to highlight is we did get an email from Brooks Baer from the Department of the Prosecuting Attorney in response to an inquiry from Member Carson, who highlighted that the majority of, vast majority of crimes prosecuted by their office were not witnessed by the police. And they were highlighting a lot of different types of evidence, most of which you did cite. But they did also highlight video and audio, and I believe that Member Salassa was highlighting that there's a lot of social media videos. Is there anyone in your office currently reviewing those? I've heard they've been shared with your office. Because, you know, if there's a license plate on one of those, it sounds like maybe we have a lot to go off of based on what we're hearing from Brooks and yourself.
A good question for Mr. Brooks is, is if they're willing to take that as video evidence, right? Because we don't know, we don't know who took the video. We cannot establish who took the video. We cannot attest to a video's authenticity in regards to it being not altered or anything like that, right? So it's very difficult in regards to social media, but let them post that on social media. It's a good lead for us, right? If they think that we're not taking on their license plates and taking note of that information, they're greatly mistaken. Let them keep on doing what they're doing, and then we'll capitalize it on a different way.
All right, so we of course have a focus meeting tonight on the dog park issue. We have a focus meeting next month on legislative priorities. So be on the lookout for a time in April. I'll be asking for someone to come from the prosecutor's office. I want to make sure we dig deep into this and start to actually get some real solutions and movement on this one. We definitely appreciate your answers in illuminating how some of this works. I don't see any hands up online. Are there any other board members with questions? Chuck, please go ahead.
Yes, Lieutenant Segusio, I remember you saying a couple meetings ago about the signage out at the lookout, that it was kinda old and you could hardly read it. Has that been replaced yet?
Not, not, not to my knowledge at this point in time. It's one of those things that we've been doing for years. I don't know if DFM or Department of Facility and Maintenance has a very long laundry list to complete, but those signage, signage up there saying that no parking from a certain time, 10 to 6, if I'm not mistaken, would be a very great help. We're issuing citations even in regards to some of the signs being faded or stickers and graffiti on them. But just like I said, most of these people, they end up paying the citation. We kind of wanting it to go to court so that we can explain to the judges and stuff like that in regards to our situation up there, and maybe we can get some traction in getting those citations based. We're also purchasing, if I'm not mistaken, District One is purchasing a signboard, a message signboard that we're gonna be putting in the area of Archie Baker Park, right at the base of Makiki Heights Drive and Makiki, or Round Top, sorry, apologize. But indicating that the, the lookouts are closed from a particular time, maybe that will help. And I also even was speaking to someone from the neighborhood in regards to possibly maybe the community thinking of putting speed humps in the, in the areas of the turns and stuff like that. So we can mitigate some of these racers going up over there, yeah.
All right, thank you. Well, I don't see any other hands raised from board members at this time. Anyone else in attendance have any questions for Lieutenant Segusio? This is gonna include online. You can raise your hand if you're online. Seeing none, thank you very much for your report. We appreciate your time.
You guys have a great night, and I'll be hanging out and listening to the second portion of the.
Okay, thank you so much. We're gonna move on to Board of Water Supply. Michelle Harmon, right?
Hi.
Thank you so much for joining us to talk more about the Board of Water Supply rate increases. We did have a more thorough report, I believe, in November. Was that right? So there's gonna be a lot more information online if people want to watch the recording from our November meeting, but we did ask for an update. So this is an abbreviated version of this presentation. Please take it away whenever you're ready.
Hi, good evening. So as Chair mentioned, my name is Michelle Harmon, I'm Board of Water Supply rep. And tonight I just have our general water announcement, and then in a minute, my coworker Stephen Norstrom from the Communications Office is gonna give you that summary of our rate increase presentation. So tonight for our general water announcement, I just wanted to remind everybody that we have a really great rebate for high-efficiency toilets. Please submit your receipt by April to get that rebate, and it's a hundred dollar rebate. And then, just so we can move quickly, I'll be handing the floor to my coworker, Stephen Norstrom.
So I'm Stephen Norstrom from the Board of Water Supply, so just want to let you know. I know you have a jam-packed agenda tonight, so I did leave my business cards there. So if there's any questions that you have tonight that you think about later on, please feel free to email or call me. So we'll just go through this presentation fairly quick to get you guys rolling on to the next item, so why don't we move to the next slide? So as you know, Board of Water Supply, we have a very complex system. As you can see up there, we have over 192 pumps. We have lots of tunnels, and we service over a million people, serving 145 million gallons of water per day with over 2,100 miles of pipeline. Next slide, it's like this. And as you know, we are a semi-autonomous agency. We are financially separate from the rest of the city and county of Honolulu. We're solely funded by our rate pairs, so our rates only apply to water, not the sewer. Even though you see the bill, it says sewer, that's a different agency. That's the Department of Environmental Services. So if you have any sewer questions, you would reach out to them, and they would be able to update you on any questions you may have. Next slide, please. So the next slide, we're very proud of what we've accomplished with our latest rate increases from 2018. As you can see up there, through 2023, we have invested nearly $770 million in the planning, design, and construction of nearly 500 projects to replace the aging infrastructure that includes our pipes and pumps and also for some new facilities. So very excited about that. On the next slide, you'll see here that Michelle, the green line shows inflation. So as we all know, when you go grocery shopping, we're all paying for way more than what we paid a couple of years ago. The Board of Water Supply, feel the pain, yes. As you can see there below, our increase in revenues over the years did not match what we projected the inflation would be. So it definitely hurt our purchasing power, which has decreased by about 8%. Next slide, please. So despite the overreductions in our energy consumption, which you can see in purple, which we were very excited about, the energy cost factor per kilowatt hour increased, even though our energy overall decreased. We are paying way more, as you can see that green light there, green line there, and also the orange line shows our monthly costs. So our overall bill for electricity was $33 million. Was it over budget? Yep, 20% over budget by $5.5 million. Next slide, please. So we're still dealing with the Red Hill contamination crisis, which forced us to invest in expensive monitoring wells, which we're working on, an exploratory well. So we have to replace nearly about 17.5 million gallons per day of potable well capacity. So that's something we're working on, and we did bring a flyer, it did have a flyer up there regarding our claim with the Navy. So you could read that and find more information about the cost and our claim with the Navy currently. Next slide, please. Okay, so as you know, we have tightened our belts a little bit in the face of these obstacles. So we've chosen not to pass on energy cost increases to our customers. And we have deferred equipment purchases, vehicle replacement, and less critical projects. So as a result, we were able to stick to the already approved rate increases. And despite high inflation, we have kept this year's operation and maintenance budget pretty flat, which was great news for us. On the next slide, you'll kind of see where your rate pair's money goes. That's a lot of questions people wonder, hey, I'm paying money, where is that money going? So you can kind of see the, out of the money from the rate, it goes to fund our operations and our capital improvement projects. So this pie graph shows how that money is spent. So capital project spending includes what we pay for with cash and the amount we pay in debt service. So adding the 13% and 14% together, that is 27% operations, and maintenance is about a third. Nearly all of the rest for is for employee salaries, benefits, our retirement fund, and for those high electrical costs that we have. Next slide, please. Setting our water rates is all about striking a balance between the investments we must make to operate, maintain, repair, and replace the water system while striving to maintain affordability for our customers. Next slide. So this one's an interesting one to take a look at. So the increases that we have put into effect as of February 1 will raise about $550 million additional dollars. So this will continue to fund our operations and maintenance in addition to the over $1 billion in critical infrastructure investments. So the two biggest areas investments are for new sources. That's what you see in yellow in the bottom portion. And then the pipelines is that kind of reddish-brownish color up there. Next slide. So I want to just talk, take a quick moment here to talk about you, the customers. As shown in the first blue line, single-family residential makes up 90% of our customer accounts and uses a little more than a third of our water. But very importantly, the rates that they pay cover only 95% of the cost to serve them. So if you do the math, the difference is made up with the non-residential customers. As you can see on non-residential, that's the orange bar right there. They're only 5% of our overall customers, and the cost of service recovery is at 117%. So they pay well above the cost to serve them. That difference is used to subsidize single-family agriculture, non-potable, and recycled water. Next slide, please. So as of February 1 of this year, the increase went into effect by 10%. The board approved it back in November, so you'll start to see the increase in your bills starting probably next month in March. There's another increase in July of this year by 10%, and then we'll have a 9% increase, 8.5, 8 and 8 through July of 2028. Next slide. So our residential customers pay more as water use increases. So we do have that essential needs tier that promotes, it's a way to promote affordability, to get people to conserve water. So folks that are using within that 2,000 gallon range are having the best cost estimate, and we'll go over that in a little bit here. Next slide. We also are doing things that we're trying to increase for essential needs here that's limited to about 2.5% per year. That includes all residential customers get that rate, and 10% of Board of Water Supply residential customers use around 2,000 gallons or less. I think a single-family family uses about 9,000 total. Next slide. And so this is the one that I wanted to really go over. So the, the limited increases in the essential needs here are shown to the far left. So the current rate right now is $4.46 per 1,000 gallons. And by July 1, 2028, it will rise to less than a dollar, to $5.17. So looking at that, not too bad, right? But to the right, the rate for usage above 30,000 gallons per month would rise from $9.25. That's way on the right, that little kind of blue-purple line, to $8.02. So we really are doing this to encourage conservation by rewarding the low-water users and having our highest-water users pay more. So those who pay the highest rate are the top 3%, and they use more than three times the average single-family customer. Next slide. So we do recognize that as our rates go up, we must also do more to encourage water conservation. So we do offer a number of rebates for water conservation on different appliances. So we have the weather-based irrigation controller, clothes washers, and what Michelle mentioned earlier this evening is the low-flush toilet rebate. We just increased that from $45 to $100. It's for a limited time offer, but we really want people to take advantage because a toilet uses a lot of water. So definitely purchase a water since labeled toilet, 1.28 gallons per flush or less, and get that $100 rebate. Next slide. And so other things that we're doing too is we also reach out to hotels, and while hotels do use a lot of water, they're great on being efficient and reducing water usage. We're working with different businesses and condos. We have a water wisdom program where we're reaching out to property managers, because many folks that live in condos don't pay a water bill. And while they want to conserve water, it's not really top of mind. So you're not really paying a bill, to be honest. You don't really think about it all the time. So we're working very closely with them through various presentations that we have done. Ernie Lauer, Chief Manager and Engineer, has went out and talked to a bunch of different condos. And we've also started a direct install program for our kopuna, so we have a partnership with St. Francis. We're gonna start on the west side, and we're gonna go and do water audits in senior homes, check their water fixtures, their aerators, making sure they have water-efficient appliances, and just help them to reduce water usage, to lower their overall water bill. And that is a very quick and brief presentation of our rate increases, so.
I recognize, Joe Quintero.
Yeah.
Funny, Logan, Logan has his name tagged up. I don't think either.
Yeah, okay. About seven years ago, we had like $2 billion worth of actual war running out. I know God now could be on billions, so actually including our price over the last five or 10 years, that right?
Yep, that's correct. Yeah, we do have a very robust capital improvement project, but because of a little bit of Red Hill, we kind of had to put some of our more critical projects on hold, or less critical projects on hold.
Thank you, that's good.
Yeah, there you go. Any other questions from board members? Please go ahead.
Yes, how does, how does the business that's like, that's gonna open up in Kali Loa, I think, the surf thing? They, they're gonna be using millions of gallons to fill up their pool or whatever. How does that impact all of us, or does it? And are we eventually gonna have shortages of water if more businesses like that open up or whatever, really?
So I know that we're trying to, well, first of all, I know, and I would, I remember that whole wave thing out on the west side. I believe there were some things that felt to the cracks of how that got approved. But I know that any type of business or condo or that gets built, it has to go through a permitted process with the Board of Water Supply. So I know there's been times that we'll go back and we'll look at the plans and we'll say, hey, yeah, these are good, but we need to make these changes or we're not gonna approve it. And I know we're trying to do other sources with conservation, and we also are starting with a D-SAL plan out on the west side to take a lot of those businesses at Campbell Industrial Yard off of the municipal water supply. So they're reliant just on D-SAL. We're also doing the recycled water on the west side for golf courses. So we take wastewater and we repurpose that for irrigation for golf courses and things like that as well. Thank you. Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions from board members at this time? I don't see any online. Any questions from any other attendees? Please go ahead. Can you say your name first?
Hi, I'm John Taylor, resident here. Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Directly related to terms, but could you speak a little bit about how general our water supply is, are we concerned that we're basically just shorted?
Can you please repeat the question before you answer?
Oh, yeah. So she's asking if there's gonna be a shortage in our water supply down the future, and will there be a shortage? That's why we promote water conservation. So actually, we have people have been doing pretty good. When we shut down three of our main sources, Halava Shaft and the two wells in IA on Halava, we did a 10% water conservation request. It was voluntary, and the community reacted well. They listened, they understood what was going on, and the community did well. So there's always needs for a conservation. That's why we heavily promote, oh, my, sorry, heavily promote our, I thought our presentation was still up, heavily promote our rebates, like changing out your toilet, even from, like, a lot of the old toilets are six gallons, going to a 1.28 gallon per flush, looking for leaks, that all helps, every little thing, shorter showers. And so that's why we do a lot of different events and try to promote water conservation. So we're in good shape, but there's always more we can do.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Please, yes, but please give it brief, but yes, go ahead.
So in terms of those devices you mentioned, like toilets, the usage, our building, I live in a property, but interested, probably, yeah.
So she's asking if, regarding our rebates, she lives in a condo, she's interested, how would she go about doing that? All you need to do is purchase the product. You just put the name of your condo on the rebate application form, and you will get the rebate for it. Just make sure you save the receipt.
Do we have extras up there?
Yep, yeah, go help yourself. Yeah, there's extras, and we have a copy of our Water Matters handout, which has all the information about the rate increases, and then we have the Red Hill claim as well. You can read more about this.
Great, thank you very much. Any other questions at this time? Hearing none, thank you very much for giving us that truncated abbreviated report and staying here for, to answer some questions. You're welcome. Thank you. All right, for our big presentation, we have mental health resources. Do we have a representative from Hawaii Ares Crisis Program? Thank you for joining us. Please come up. So I sincerely thank both of you for coming out, which we had the tragic incident on Peakoi earlier this month. And I thought it was really important to take a pause and talk about mental health resources available for the community.
I have resources here.
Great, let's see, Logan, could you help with this request? Thanks, Logan. And please start whenever you're ready.
First and foremost, Ian, I want to thank you for inviting us here to educate the community about Hawaii Cares 988. We are the Suicide Crisis Line for the state, the whole state of Hawaii. If you mind, I like to stand instead of sit down.
Please go ahead.
Yeah, so we're the Suicide Crisis Line for the state of Hawaii. We also service the neighbor islands, especially here. We're centered, sorry about my voice, I lost my voice during the Super Bowl, so. But anyway, we are the Suicide Crisis Line. One of the things that we've been trying to do to steer the stigma of suicide is that we want to encourage everyone, right? You don't have to call the Suicide Crisis Line because you're suicidal. We want you to utilize the services should you feel stressed out, you're depressed, you feel isolated. Maybe you're dealing with something that you've never had to deal with in your entire life. It causes you to feel overwhelmed, right? Give us a call. Give us a call. Where are the support line for you folks? For the Crisis Line, there's different services that we do provide. One of them is therapeutic support. This is where you get to call, and you get to vent, and you get to share about what's going on. We can provide that support for you. We're open 24 hours, seven days a week. We do service kopunas, adults, and also kikis, yeah? There's this thing called CMO. It's a crisis mobile outreach worker. One of the things to, that a crisis mobile outreach worker does, per AMHD, which is the state, they have to come out to you within 45 minutes to an hour. The things that they can do for you is they'll meet with you, they'll assess the situation, they'll also do a lot of community resource linkages. Should you need, let's just take, let's just take a situation where you've never dealt with it before, and you know, you're having trouble having to get your state ID or EBT or medical or social security, therapists, psychiatrists, psychologists, sometimes having to go through your insurance could be rough. It takes, there's a waitlist, right? So one of the things that the CMO does do, they have faster access to these services. So they can come out, meet with you, they can do the phone calls, they can do the linkages, they can even provide you temporary case management. CSM is this crisis support management. It's where you have temporary case management for that interim. Maybe you need legal aid. They can walk you through those things. A lot of the services that we do have, especially for CSM, it's a benefit for the individual because you have a person face-to-face walking you through the system. Sometimes it could be very. Sometimes it could be very overwhelming. Sometimes it could be challenging having to navigate through the system. Sometimes you have people who can't read or write. That's the benefit of having a CSM. We do have temporary, we do have crisis shelters. One of them is called the LCRS, which is a licensed crisis residential service. It's a 10 day stay. One of the criteria is that you have to have mental health. Remember now, it's not that you have to be suicidal to qualify for these things. Maybe you're just having a mental health break. Maybe you need to be put on medication. Maybe you need mood stabilization because everything is just so stressful. Don't hesitate, give us a call. There's also the stabilization bed, which we have in Kona. We also have LCRS shelters in Maui. We also have one in Hilo. We also have here, we have two stabilization beds. One in Procity and the other one is in Kanyohi. So there's stabilization beds for people, let's just say you're having a mental health break. You get, you've never gone through a situation before and you need a evaluation and you need additional support. And your whole life is just so stressful. This is something that you can be evaluated for and a referral can go in to see if you meet criteria. Once you get to the crisis shelter, they'll help you gather everything that you need, whether it's medication, whether it's therapy. You don't have to do anything. You just let them know, hey, these are the things that I need, you know? And for children, we do have crisis workers for children as well. We provide services for that. They have crisis workers that go out to the children as well. If there's anything that I want you to take away from this presentation is that we're here to support you. You're not alone. You don't have to be suicidal to give us a call. Maybe you're having a bad day. You know, if you don't want to talk to your family members because that's just going to cause some heat, give us a call. We're here to help. There's many different things. We like to consider ourselves as the one stop shop. We are the ones that can link you to many different services. Let's just say you have a family member who's going through a very challenging time. And they don't want a crisis worker. One of the things that we can do is if you give us the information, we can send out a crisis worker because consent for services happen when the crisis worker shows up. If the person, if your family member does not want services, maybe they can provide you services to help you deal with the stressors that's going on. Let's just say you have a family member who's a drug addict or who is exhibiting some mental health behaviors. And they don't want services, but it's been tough on you. We can, we can send a CMO to you to help you link with services. And that way it's easier for you to deal with. You don't have to deal with a mental health or substance abuse family member alone. Again, utilize our services. Any questions?
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Definitely appreciate you being here. I want to open up first to questions from board members. Do we have any questions from members of our board? Please go ahead, Chuck.
Yeah, first of all, thank you and your team and your organization for being in existence and helping all these type of people. Do you feel that you're getting enough support from government agencies or government in general? And how can the general public be of more assistance to you in spreading the word, I guess, about your organization?
So I like to think of it as our team being in collaboration with the state, with the federal, with everybody. We come together as a team. So as far as support is concerned, I believe we are because we're constantly meeting. We're constantly training our staff members. Thank you, Ian, for allowing us to come here. And this is where it starts, when we get invited to the community and we get to educate people about mental health and the services that we can offer, that we do offer. This is where it's all, this is where it begins. So we've been doing a lot of, a lot of going, reaching out, going to the schools, going to the communities, doing presentations. A lot of things we try, we're trying. One of the things that I want to educate you folks also is that Hawaii has trained police officers, special police officers. They're called CIT. It's Crisis Intervention Training. So if you're going through a situation where you're dealing with a mental health individual, you want to request, when you call 911, you want to request for a CIT officer. A CIT officer, because they are well versed with mental health. They're well versed with mental health. They know what to do versus the other police officers. Oftentimes they're not equipped or well versed in how to deal with the people. CIT officers.
Do we have any other questions from board members at this time? Seeing none, I want to open up to the public. Anyone with some questions? Please go ahead.
Claire Santos, I'm a registered nurse in the community and I do telehealth for rare disease case management. I do give to my patients your number of the nine eight eight. Many are isolated at home. All their medical visits are telehealth. They're not getting out. They're not interacting with people in community. They start to spiral down and get into crisis. So I do want to thank you for being available and I do give your information out regularly.
Oh, one more service that I want to also inform you folks that we're proud of, that we were able to launch last year is text and chat. Text and chat is, let's just say a teenager, they don't want to talk over the phone because they don't want their hear, their parents to hear about what's going on. It provides a safety net for that teenager. It's the confidentiality that the teenager has. Text and chat also has served a purpose where, let's just say for phone service, for phone service, they don't have phone service, but they're able to connect to wifi. They can text nine eight eight and reach our call center. We will be able to converse with them via text and also send a crisis worker through via text. So that's how I've been able to work through text and chat. Like there was a female in Kauai, she was phoneless. She didn't have phone service, but she was able to text. I was able to gather all the information that I needed to send a crisis worker to her to stabilize the situation and provide her the support.
Thank you so much for that. Any other questions? Please go ahead.
Thank you for all that you do.
Could you share your name first?
Cyrus Al. And my question is, does your services support family members of people who live here, but they don't live here? They're like, maybe they're in Vegas or Washington and they do the texts on all.
So that's a great question. We do have, we're linked with the National Suicide Prevention Line. So we are connected to all the suicide prevention lines statewide. So let's just say an individual is in Las Vegas, they have an 808 number, they call, they text. We're able to link them up to the Suicide Crisis Line in Las Vegas or whether it's California, we have a database that we can utilize. Did that answer your question?
Yeah. Any other questions at this time? All right, well, I do have one question for you. So first off, thank you so much for being here, you know, out in response to the loss of life in Peatoy and how we had so many residents who saw this in real time. I thought it was so crucial to bring these services. One thing we're working on still is trying to get this out to some of the people who might be struggling. Because I talked to so many people who said they couldn't sleep that night or for nights afterwards. People have nightmares, people have real problems witnessing this horrific event. We're trying to figure out how to get resources to them. Scheduling neighborhood boards, one small way to do it. Do you have anything they're able to like mail out or submit to condos or do you have any sort of budget for outreach to areas surrounding where a really awful incident has occurred?
So one of the things about community resources with the call center is we have a vast community resource database. Excuse me.
To clarify, this is, we know that people reach out to, it's really helpful, but do you, do you actively do any proactive outreach to people that we know might be affected currently?
That's where our crisis mobile outreach worker comes in.
Okay.
That's, and it's of no cost. It's of no cost. I just want to put it out there because sometimes people is like, I don't want to call because I don't have the money or maybe my insurance won't cover. I just want, I just want everybody to know that it's, that when the CMO is sent out, it doesn't cost anything to you.
Well, in this case, we're not sure who they are, right? We know where they live in a geographic area, but people who have my, have my phone number after witnessing what occurred, they reached out to me proactively. But I know that means there's a huge segment that don't know who I am, so I didn't refer them to you folks. And I don't know which condo they're in or what unit, but I know geographically where they are. Are you able to like send like mail to people's homes, like just blanket an area or something like that?
That's something I can take back to my team and I'll be more than willing to. Do you have the addresses? Because what we can do, if you can forward those addresses to us, just like how we brought the flyers, we can mail that out.
That's really helpful. Thank you. This is something I looked for for neighborhood boards. We have a budget for outreach. And so with something like every door direct mail, you can mail every door in a geographic area for 20 cents. And just so happens, it's in the middle of the geographic area. It's about 700, exactly 749 units. With printing costs, it all comes out to about 250, 300, 400 dollars, what we're looking at for like sending things to like every single door. So I've already priced it out. It's just something which we're not able to use our neighborhood board budget for. So if you have like resources to be able to do that, it's not a huge expense, but I know people in that geographic area need to know this information or at least some of them do.
No, we have a budget like for our flyers that we send out to the community, the state covers it.
That's really good to know. I'll happily follow up. Do I have, were you in the email chain where we were?
Yes, yes, I was.
So I'll make sure to share all of the budgeting and everything I've already done for the service with the how to contact and reach those people via every door direct.
Yeah, but before, if Paul can share a little bit.
Okay.
Do you want to share?
Hi, hi, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I am fairly new to the crisis call center. But I have a history of working with at risk youth and substance abuse within our facilities at O triple C. So this is a blessing and an opportunity to work even further, working with people who have suicidal thoughts, homicidal thoughts, hallucinations and everything that we could ever think of. Working at the crisis line, we go through a lot of difficult callers. We call them that, but they're routine callers. And we have to follow procedures for certain individuals that can be calling from out of state. We do get a lot of Vegas calls. They feel that they want to call back home because they feel at home. They don't want to deal with crisis centers that may be in Las Vegas. So we welcome that, but we also have resources like warm lines where they, if they wanted to talk story, because we are a crisis center. We give them so many minutes, you know, if they're not going through crisis or not having suicidal thoughts, hey, you might as transferring you to a warm line where you can actually talk to somebody for as long as you want, right? So we offer these services. I know Sasha had mentioned about being in a family members with addiction or even yourself. We have, we can transfer them to Aloha United Way. So being in this call center, I have learned a lot of community resources, a lot of wealth. And it is definitely important for the community to learn about what kind of resources are out here. And I feel as if anything to do with mental health, people just kind of turn their heads and not want to deal with it. But I'm just letting you guys know, if you don't want to, you can call us. You can give the people the information so that they could call us so that we can help them. If we could prevent them from committing suicide, then that's something that, this is the reason why we're here. If we can prevent them from being so depressed and just making it through the night, then call us, right? They might just be having marital issues. Maybe they just needed to vent so they could just let somebody hear their side of the story. That's what we're here for. So crisis, suicide, whatever it may be, our services can definitely help an individual if they're willing to get the help. At times we do a lot of procedures to help the person and then they turn around and they say, I'm not interested. You know, it's very heart wrenching. The eyes are like, no, come on, you know, you need these services, but we can only do so much. But I'm glad that this crisis center is available to everybody. It's just getting it out there, exposing our call center and letting everybody know, hey, you guys need help, we're right here. Just call us and all they have to do is dial nine eight eight. If you have an 808 number, nine eight eight, it will get transferred straight to us. So if you guys, I'm just letting you know, can be anybody, your, your family, your friends, let them know that we are definitely available 24 hours per day. It's never going to shut down. Thank you guys so much.
All right. Thank you so much for the presentation, all that information. We really appreciate you for coming out.
And please, there's flyers, magnets even, if you want to put it on your refrigerator or whatever it may be, please take it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. We're now going to fill in a vacancies. We have one vacancy for sub district one and one vacancy for sub district two currently on the agenda. Do we have anyone, have you heard from anyone, Logan, or have proof of address? Excellent. That's very helpful. You do?
I don't know who they are though.
Oh, okay. So if, do we have anyone interested in filling either of those positions? We got two hands up. Okay. Um, let's see, best way to handle this. Do you know? You know your sub districts. Okay, perfect. Okay, I'm going to go left to right. T, your sub district, please. All right, sir, what about your sub district? Your sub district one, great. And were you able to submit your ID in advance to? No words. T, do you have your ID with you? What sub district are you in?
So what you can do, what you can do is you can just have them, tell them a little bit about themselves.
Well, I want to confirm the sub districts, okay, because otherwise it might not be the most useful. So I'm going to welcome you up to tell us a little bit about yourself. And once we can figure out T, you can bring your address to Logan, we can start verifying which sub district you're in. So and then you're going to, after T, go up and show your ID to Logan. So that's how we're going to swap this.
Just up there?
Yes, please. So we can give you about 30 seconds to a minute to introduce yourself and then we'll see if there's any question in board members.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so my name is Sam Granger. I am a resident up on Round Top Drive, up towards the top on the Tanis Round Top area. I've been on Tanis for about two and a half years. I am a member of the TCA, which is the Tanis Community Association. And so that is a collective of the residents up on Tanis and Round Top. And basically I'm here so that, you know, we can have some representation on neighborhood boards and create that link so that the issues that we're discussing find a wider audience and, you know, have basically more impact rather than just talking about it between ourselves and kind of doing little bits here and there. I want to really have some impact behind it. Things we're talking about is like safety on the roads. We've been seeing things like burnt out cars recently. There was two in the last month. Is the racing issue, which is a big concern of mine. I personally found a license plate several times to police with great descriptions. There's a dumping that occurs on the sidelines, which is a big concern. In fact, the TCA actually has a quarterly plan up. So every, every quarter we go out and we look at these sidelines and we organize with the city so that they can pick up the rubbish that we bring up from over the other sides. Road maintenance, increasing police presence. And then generally, and issues associated with being on a preservation district, you know, these are the things I want to bring to the board.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions from board members at this time? Not hearing any. Logan, can you tell us which sub district T is in?
Even sub district two.
And, oh, he's in some district two. So we don't have a vacancy. I'm very sorry, T, we do not have a vacancy in two. We have one and three. And you are, which sub district again? Would you mind bringing your ID up to Logan so he can confirm? Do you have any? Yes, I understand. So again, we have vacancies in one and three for the neighborhood board at this time. Will you be able to confirm? Okay, do we have any questions? If not, do we have a motion to accept Mr. Granger, what's it? To the board.
I'll move to the board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I saw Nathan first.
We don't need a second.
Oh, we don't need a second, okay. Can we do a, I want to see if we can avoid a roll call. So I'm going to just
Oh, we should do a roll call for Stu. Yeah, sorry.
I'm so sorry to everyone who's waiting for the, the big agenda item. Okay, let's do a roll call. Logan, with gusto, let's
Yeah, so I'm sorry, can I get your name one more time? Sam Granger. Sam Granger. So the motion or the nominations for Sam Granger to the sub district one vacancy. Baldwin?
Granger.
Carson?
Granger.
Granger.
Jar?
Granger.
Arden. Fujinaka. Kawano. Clink?
Blink. I know he's present.
Paul, are you there? You're muted.
Please come back to my band.
Kojima.
Granger.
Lakalaka, Manapuna. Lee?
Granger.
Nakamoto. Park. Oh, I'm sorry, Park. Uh, Peck?
Granger.
Salasa. Steel Quest.
Granger.
Clink?
Ross. Granger. Is that eight?
Yeah, we have eight right now without Paul.
All right. I'm very sorry. That motion does not pass. We require a quorum to allow it. Um, Nathan, uh, no, Nathan, sorry, Chuck, would you mind calling Paul? I'm gonna see, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna put this at the end of new business and we'll revisit to see if we have quorum at that point.
All right.
All right. I'm very sorry for the motion not passing. Uh, with that, I'm going to do a brief recess. Uh, Nathan, please sit here.
Now Paul is listening. Was I just, oh.
I'm sorry, this is Paul. Was I just called? I'm having a hard time hearing anything. Sorry for the interruption. Okay. Paul, this Paul.
Yeah, Paul, this is Logan. We're gonna come back to the, uh, the vacancy a little bit later. If you could just, uh, follow along and let us know if you can't hear. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Nathan, when everyone called meeting order?
Okay, we'll, uh, come back from recess.
All right, let's set us up.
Yeah, okay, so I had it on my phone. Uh, so this is the dog park presentation. Uh, I believe we want to, um, yeah, so, uh, we would like to have a motion to support the establishment of an off-leash dog park in Makiki. And we took pictures and, uh, marked out spots on map uh, and a bit of a presentation. Uh, so I guess hopefully at the end of this, we'll have a motion to adopt, at least propose one of the locations, uh, as a suggestion.
Well, thank you very much for that, Nathan. Um, so again, my name's Chair Ian Ross. I'm here helping out the neighborhood board. Uh, trying to help us with this issue. We've been talking about this as a community, I believe, for seven, eight years now. I remember when I first joined the board, I asked, you know, Representative Bellotti for a coffee meeting, cause I want to know all the big things. And she listed three big things for me. The first one was the dog park issue. And this is something which we've been kicking as it came down the road for a long time. And it's not because there's not a lot of obstacles. There are a lot of obstacles. We had a, uh, parks committee. We were able to come down to a few main criteria for what would be considered useful for a dog park. It doesn't mean we need this to have a dog park, which is things to consider. And some of the things that we discussed a couple of years ago on that was, does the place have water? Um, what is the size of the location? Is there parking there? It's not necessarily you need every single one of these things, but they're all crucial considerations. And, uh, so what we want to do was do a breakdown of key locations. Uh, a few months ago, uh, council member Calvin Say actually, uh, held a walk around the community. We went to a number of these parks and solicited feedback from those who were there to actually look at some of these locations. And I realized, when we talk about park names, so many people aren't sure on exactly what the formal names for all the parks are, or they're not quite sure which part you're talking about. So I want to put together this presentation. So what we wanted to look at is, we identified three potential locations at Makiki District Park. Any place that we end up selecting, we still have to go convince the parks to do. Um, but we wanted to start us having this discussion on where they could be. So this is right, this is where we are right now. We're calling this the quad. It's the area between the different crosswalks. Right now, uh, this is a sidewalk there. Right now, people just kind of cut across, not a space primarily used for anything, but it is central. We would have the benefit of some level of lighting during the evening. We have the benefit of it being, you know, very central that location. And it's an area that really can be used for anything else. Um, I use some like satellite imaging to be able to get some estimated square footage. So I estimate it's about 3,500 square feet. Um, through the grapevine, I've heard the smallest possible size you could use for a dog park is 1,500 square feet. I don't know if this is actually true or not. Uh, for parking, yes, this park has fantastic parking. There's enough water. Also, yes, for this location. And the usage, I put that down as medium. It's not used directly for anything, but certainly central enough that it'll be in very much people's faces. And it will change the way people can navigate the park. So I marked that as a medium. Uh, the next location I'm calling Makiki District Park Central. This is right there by the big tree. We, we put that right over there. It'd be right in front of the building, uh, for this building or the rear of this building. Kind of coming up towards the Keel Moku Wilder intersection. Uh, this area isn't directly used for sports or anything else like that, because there's a giant tree in the middle. The giant tree in the middle has a number of decent benefits in terms of shade. But there is also the consideration that when you have too much shade, uh, let's say the droppings of the animal don't dry adequately, which makes more of a mess. Uh, so ultimately it might have to be moved a little off centered, but then you do start to get into other locations used for other things. Uh, I will note, if you're not directly under the tree, the shadow area does change throughout the day, which mitigates some of the problem. Uh, I estimate this area is well over 10,000 square feet of potential usage, not subtracting for the actual size of the tree. Again, great parking, water, and I would call the usage high on a relative scale. A lot of people are walking by there. People like to do picnics. So you are subtracting some other park utilities by putting it there, but otherwise it does seem like a strong contender. Um, this one gets brought up a lot. So this is what I'm calling the freeway. This is the space between the freeway and the park. It's back there. It's probably one of the most requested locations by top two dog owners. Uh, what this would do is it would be somewhat between the skate park, park plaza, and the southern area. It's not primarily used for anything at this time. It is sometimes, uh, dry a little bit slowly, but it does have decent, uh, lighting there. Uh, sorry. Like the sun shines pretty well over that area. Uh, the speed square footage is pretty huge, over 8,000 square feet. Does have parking. I'm not sure if it directly has water or if we have to end up putting some sort of poison. And the usage is very low. I'll also note it is a loud area. And sound mitigation, this board is considered because of the freeway impacts, we just tell you it's pricey. Let's just put it that way. It's pricey to mitigate freeway noise. So that gets down to kind of the main locations of Makiki District Park could have been raised to me. Uh, another option is Punahoe Square. This one had a lot of promise when we did the tour with Calvin Say's office. Uh, what we noticed is it is a huge area, so we put in the proximity of about 20,000 square feet. We probably won't even need all of that for a dog park. Um, there isn't any parking there, which is a benefit and a downside. You know, it means more, more usage in area for local residents, a dense area. We might be able to get some support from the Manoa Neighborhood Board. It's right on the line for another neighborhood board. Uh, water, I'm not certain. I mentioned that itself. Um, but I'm not sure. And the usage is low. This is a large park that generally looks pretty decent and has almost no functionality. And I think giving this park some love could be a real good thing to do. Um, the other ideas that have been suggested here, and we'll bring this up later, is it doesn't really all need to be used for a dog park. If we use like, say, the back half or the corner, it's a large area. We could, um, discuss other things like bring exercise equipment to the park as well. The final location is the Peepoy Mini Park. Uh, when we look at this one, we can find that's about 4,000 square feet. It has a tree, but the tree kind of doesn't pass a huge shadow, so it changes throughout the day. Uh, there is no parking there. I'm not sure if there's water. Uh, if someone here knows for sure, they can let us know. And I would call the usage here very low. I have never seen any usage except for our helpless community in this park at any given time. Uh, it is something which is really central to a lot of things. One downside is it's not nearly as loud as the freeway. Because it's under the freeway and by the on-ramp, it does get a little noisy at certain times of the day. Uh, otherwise, I think it's a contender for us. And so I wanted to break those parks down as some options. Um, before we move on, I, I actually, so you're gonna like this. It's not really a good way for us to all speak for any real discernible amount of time or have a full-on conversation, the time constraints of a neighborhood board. This is a frustrating constraint. So what I put together is a way for us to actually vote in real time and start to see some of the top contenders here. Please do not start voting. You can feel free to scan it with your, and get the QR code. We would actually like everyone here to weigh in at some point, uh, whether or not you have a dog. I think you might have some important insights. But before you vote, I wanted to open this up real briefly to see if anyone else has any other suggested locations. I've added an other, and I think it's worthwhile for us to consider what those others might be. So if anyone wants to raise their hand, is there any other park or primary location that they might consider a top, uh, a worthwhile contender for a dog park? Yes, please go ahead. Really good question. So we have actually discussed that before. Um, it is an on-leash dog park currently. Uh, when we've had discussions, I'm gonna just tell you, uh, when someone comes to a board meeting and says, I have 40 to 50 petitions from all the neighbors asking to not turn this into a dog park, I says the neighborhood board found that pretty persuasive. Uh, feel free, if you are strong in favor of it, of placing it on there as an option. My reason for not putting on the agenda is I realize we get 40 or 50 more people here just to say no. Uh, but it doesn't mean we, we can't do it. Uh, you know, we are representative of democracy. And maybe there's more people who want it than don't want it, and that can be considered. So places like Archie Baker Park can go under other. Thank you for that recommendation. Uh, I'm gonna stop this presentation for one second. And then I'm going to bring up some of the results. Feel free to start voting. You didn't get the QR code? Didn't work?
Oh, yeah, I did. Well, I didn't give it to him.
Okay, yes.
Uh, just for max recommend before anyone starts voting that, uh, you let the mayor's rep, um, just present one of their reports back from DPR. It might, uh, influence the voting.
Okay, let's hold on then. Uh, so is the mayor's representative with us?
Can we just get the key up?
Uh, we've been asked to hold. We have, apparently we have a presentation in the mayor's office.
It's one of the follow-up. Uh, you're muted, Denise.
Nathan, you're chair.
Yeah, I sure am.
Hey Denise, this is Logan. You're muted still.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good, good evening. And, and thank you, uh, Logan, for letting me open and share the information gathered from Department of Parks and Recs. So the process for, uh, review by DPR is that the neighborhood board identifies a potential location and confirms the park, uh, will be either on leash or off leash. But they do require at least 30,000 square feet and the location location need an underutilized park location. They did note that Makiki Park has a considerable amount of foot traffic. And it would not be a good candidate for a dog park. They do recommend working in large, underutilized spaces like the park at Punahoe and Wilder. So the process is to send a formal written correspondence. It could be a letter, it could be a resolution. Um, send it to DPR. The director will review it and she will either approve or deny the request. And if the department moves forward with minor improvements to existing infrastructure, if it is approved.
All right. Thank you very much, Denise.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I guess, Ian, if we could get the QR code back.
Absolutely. Uh, I'm trying to present it now. So hopefully our QR codes large enough, people will be able to scan with their phones. Feel free to come closer if not.
The mayor's office has decided.
We're still trying to get a soliciting, uh, input on this one. And it's useful to know if the group doesn't support it. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. I just can't, so what is the, um, is there, uh, Marinal? There's a dog park near Marinal that I guarantee is not 30,000 square feet. That's why I believe 15,000, 1,500 square feet. Has anyone here used the Marinal Dog Park?
Of those three?
The one, uh, yeah, Spurgle Street.
Tiny one?
Yeah. I can't imagine that one is 30,000 square feet.
Did she just say that it would not approve anything that would let her?
I don't believe she used wouldn't. I believe it was a not, a very strong language, but it wasn't wouldn't.
Oh, sorry Denise, I guess, uh, who, you get some clarification?
I'm, I'm sorry, that's what you mentioned in Kiki Park. The quad or central?
The first one was quad.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just going to report what the Department of Parks and Recs gave us. And what they said is the department is at least 30,000 square feet for the park. And the location usage is underutilized. But what I would suggest is to just put, put a formal request in to DPR so that they can review it. Um, and they did suggest, uh, the Punahoe and Wilder.
Thank, yeah, thank you very much, Denise.
So that pretty much concludes the presentation. I wanted to get some, uh, feedback on this, uh, but I believe we have some hands raised, Chair.
Yeah, uh, I guess first we'll uh, recognize any board members. Seeing none, I'll quickly go to, uh, members of the audience. I see Rep Bellotti's hand up. And then I believe I saw, yeah, Yobey Dax.
Uh, some clarification on the Marinal Dog Park that is up. That's managed by, that's, that's approved by the Seating County. It is managed by Marinal. So it's like a private park.
Good to know.
Okay. Thank you very much for that information. Yes. Yes, could you go up to the microphone? Thanks.
Hi, name's Joseph Heitner. As much as it hurt, pain me to ask this, but if it was to do the Punahoe, could you remove the trees, some of the trees?
It's a very interesting question.
Because then it would work. There's too many trees there. It's just not, it's not conducted to a dog park. But removing some trees would make it. But there's also residents there too. That's why if you brought a, the Kiki area, because there's less people to piss off, to be quite honest.
Uh, we'll go ahead and Ian respond to that.
So if you respond to that, so one, we've been looking into it, um, you know, it really pains me in the urban area to ever remove the trees. Uh, what, what is, we're nowhere these, these aren't indigenous trees. And so I think if we were to consider that, maybe we could work with some partners like Outdoor Circle and perhaps try to make it maybe like Hawaii's first indigenous plant dog park, a place that we could cooperate, because if we're going to remove a non-indigenous tree, let's maybe consider planting outside of the dog park in the surrounding areas, um, some plants that would actually begin to restore the ecosystem.
That makes perfect sense.
That's what we should be doing. Outdoor Circle put all those trees there. Yeah. But native trees, but they work.
Yeah, I think, I think there could be a win-win here. Um, that could be really valuable.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Also, I do want to note, um, for selling it to surrounding property owners, I think this is a concern. All the statistics that I've read is that living near a dog park has a decent bump in your property value. Just putting it out there.
Uh, Rep Bellotti, go ahead.
Just wanted to note, um,
Just wanted to note, um, that tree at the Punahoe and Wilder area is actually a historic tree. So when we had looked at this in the past, we can't take that tree down. Also, uh, there was a lot of pushback at the time that we had looked at that as a possible dog park. And so, uh, there would need to be a lot of work done to educate the surrounding community to build up support for it.
There was a, if I could clarify, there was a lot of pushback, uh, from like Arcadia or?
Area residents, and then I think the, the individuals and the folks who had helped to have that tree designated. I believe it's a historic tree. I'd have to go back and look at what the exact designation was, but, uh, there, there is a lot of support for that. Although I know and understand and respect that, like, uh, it's, it's a challenging part. Um, but I just wanna raise that as a, that, that folks know that that's part of the situation, which is why it's been hard to get that park.
Okay, uh, would it, if what, if you go back and find the organizations that did that, would you mind, um, I guess emailing myself and perhaps, and Ian?
Sure, happy to forward that information to you all.
Awesome, thank you very much. And, uh, Ian?
Uh, my question is a tree, but all of the trees? Would this be every tree in that park?
I said that, that one is, uh, it can be trimmed back too though.
It strikes me that, like, we wanna keep some of the trees, right?
Keep that one there. I mean, it, it's in the native tree, but it's still a decked tree.
Yeah.
But it could be trimmed back as well. And yeah, that, don't give it a lot. We need trees.
Okay, this seems like potentially manageable one. What do you, what do you think?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's interesting. So we'll have to take that into account. We write up our formal request then.
So, so my recommendation at this day, stage, and instead of us trying to pass a motion right now when we potentially barely have quorum, uh, my recommendation would be that we put this again on the agenda next month or in two months. We can talk about that and give them time to also invite them. And if all of you folks are willing to come back, we might be able to hash it out in one more meeting, which might be a lot shorter, because we're not necessarily talking about every conceivable park. We're narrowing the field down to one park, if we wanna have that discussion. I'm seeing a lot of nods of heads, but Nathan, it's whatever way you wanna take it.
Uh, if you could quickly bring up the poll, I thought it looked like the Punahoe was the overwhelming, uh, pick. And then if, if it is, then yeah. I believe that sounds like our plan, yeah.
May I suggest?
Oh, if you're gonna come, yeah.
May I suggest, in the essence of time with getting this accomplished, that, yes, I think we, because we heard from someone saying Punahoe Square is a good idea, and then we hear, well, maybe it has some drawbacks, we should take the top two as being looked at. So, you know, those who are voting are thinking, okay, well, the first one's great. And then we hear from Ms. Bellotti, well, maybe there's been pushback in the past. So maybe your best bet is to give us the top two choices and do some investigating in that, and then let the, um, Department of Parks speak to vote.
Yes, uh, if we could get your name for the?
Bridget Scott.
Thank you very much Bridget. Uh, so yeah, I mean, that's, I believe that's, that's the point of, uh, uh, inviting, hopefully those organizations that we get forwarded, uh, for next meeting to see what, what's up. So I believe, yeah, um, is there any, any more, uh, comments on this topic? From the board? Oh, yes.
As an Arcadia resident, we haven't asked about it, so we don't know yes or no. We use that as a walking area, you know, we don't want to be dogged. On the other hand, you know, my dog, so I have no idea whether they'd like it or not.
Okay.
But I don't think I can say, yes, we don't, because I'm, I'm on the Arcadia Board and I have a dog last year.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, okay.
Maybe we got inside man.
Yeah, okay, well, that's good. We can, uh, yeah, prod you for your opinion.
Yeah, we have a general media.
Okay, so we need time for multiple boards that meet monthly to meet. So I do think, uh, placing this again on the agenda for April seems like maybe the best idea. Then we can maybe hash out all the details then.
Okay, uh, Thomas?
I'm, I'm ready to make the postpone motion when we're ready for it.
So we actually don't need a motion. If there's no, uh, motion to do anything, then we can just move on whenever. Yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, yeah, so seeing no further comment, I believe we can. We're, I believe you're back. Yeah.
You wanna recess us?
Uh, yeah, sure, recess. Just passing it all back. Yeah. All right, Ian, you're back in.
Thanks Nathan, good job. All right, uh, I'm gonna move us on to the next portion of this agenda. Uh, request for recreation equipment or facilities in Makiki. This is a very good time for us to bring up what other types of facilities and recreation equipment we're interested in seeing in Makiki. The first part of that is, uh, exercise equipment. Does anyone have anything to speak on, on this topic? Any board members? Uh, first, I'll start with the board. Thomas, please go ahead.
Hi, uh, uh, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Great, um, this was, um, my suggestion. Um, I used to volunteer a lot at Diamond Head, and I was always, um, inspired to see the, uh, public exercise equipment, uh, that a lot of people, young and old, would use. And I thought there needs to be more of that in all communities. And, uh, the kind of park exercise, uh, uh, equipment I was thinking were things that are all body weight related. And so I was, I'd like to propose to the board that we try to get exercise equipment at our, at some public park in our district.
Uh, do you have any, does anyone have any suggestions for types of equipment they wanna see or where they might wanna see it? Please come up.
My name's Joseph Heitner. Let's see, free weights and, um, like you said, the traditional body weight access. Kinda like, be nice if at Venice Beach at the park, because you know, in your apartment, I may get my free weights and everything, but it's just hard to, I mean, don't really wanna go to the gym either, because it's a different standard now, was, you know, sensitive. Kinda like where you can just lift weights with buddies and such like that. But not, but free weights, not, um, so much the machines I could have at Diamond Head, because most people can't even use those machines, especially when you get older, you be immune to tendonitis. I would have just used free weights or even body weight exercise. But yeah, it'd be a great idea. I want to bring it up. Never thought about it before.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm trying to look up fees for the equipment at Venice Beach. That's where I'm at right now. Apparently it's paid for by, um, big chunk of it's paid for by casino revenues, so. Um, so, it's next to pay for, this is our harebrained scheme to improve health and why. Um, okay, very good. So we do have some recommendations on that. Please go ahead.
Yeah, Cyrus Howe, uh, I had a conversation with Representative Bellotti about, uh, National Fitness Courts that, um, was under some HMSA co-sponsor grant. They were going to put in, I think, five across the state. And, um, I just don't know if, uh, Representative Bellotti, if you're on, if there's a, a status on that or?
Could you repeat what type of exercise?
National Fitness Court, if you were to Google it, you know.
Thank you. Representative Bellotti, would you like to share?
Certainly, Cyrus, it was actually to see if I could defer to you, to see if there had been any more progress on that as well. But I think that is certainly something that we should follow up on, uh, if there is an appetite to acquire some, um, equipment like that at Makiki District Park. So that's to say that I can help follow up on that initiative.
Thank you. That, that sounds pretty interesting. I'm gonna try to share my screen for just a second. I don't wanna linger too long on individual pieces of exercise equipment, um, but this one seemed particularly interesting. So it looks like some sort of modular court that allows you to implement different types of things there.
Yeah, that's for younger people. I'd love to do it, but I don't think I could do that.
Balance shoes alone and?
Yeah. Like little free weights.
Uh, I'd like to recognize you again, Representative.
So the challenge with something like this at Makiki District Park is that the park already has a lot of uses. So integrating something this big would require us to really have a conversation with the city and county and park. And so if we could reach out to Denise, and maybe we could connect on how to move forward with a project like this, I can follow up with Denise and through the Seating Counties.
Thank you. That sounds very helpful. Wanna stop sharing? Uh, I took one to bring up, not seeing any other hands up at this time. Uh, if we go back to the nineteen ninety-nine Makiki District Park Plan, um, there was, oh, no, actually, that's, that's a little bit further than the agenda. I actually put it as a sub item, never mind. Uh, at this point, we'll move on to pickleball courts by request. Uh, please go ahead, Nathan.
Uh, yeah, so that one's, why me? Because, uh, I guess my parents know a number of people who use the courts down there. Uh, so they talked with a lot of the folks who play tennis or, um, and of course, people who play tennis are also into pickleball nowadays. Um, and so they all complained, uh, to my parents, who then subsequently mentioned it to me that, uh, perhaps our, uh, court, our volleyball course can be included to have, uh, pickleball, uh, lines set up. So that's, that's the extent of that request.
Okay, any further discussion for pickleball courts motions, anything like that?
I guess we could motion to request that the parks put in pickleball lines, volleyball courts.
Okay, is that a motion, or do we wanna prefer just to ask them to update us and respond at next meeting?
That would, I would agree. That would be better.
Okay, Logan, could you please put that down?
Yeah, what, what part for me?
We're talking here at Makiki District Park, the, uh, tennis courts. Um, tennis courts can have multiple types of like line collars in top of each other, and we'd like to hear about it in the park.
Put the pickleball court lines on the volleyball side of, yeah.
Understood.
Yeah, because that's, that seems to be what, uh, the other parks have all done, like Noah District Park has pickleball lines. But somehow, uh, Makiki doesn't.
So let's go ahead and, uh, just see if they have any thoughts on that. Maybe there's a reason. One second, do, or do you wanna plug my computer? Hey, uh, I'm gonna be calling a recess due to technical difficulties. Give us a thumbs up.
I can hear you.
Right.
We're gonna hear you.
And how about over here? Can you hear me over here? And last one, can you hear me? Can you hear me at this one?
Yes.
All right, I called the meeting back to order, uh, seven twenty-nine PM. I believe we just concluded pickleball, so we'll move on to the running track around Makiki District Park. I, oh, we have a handle? Oh, pickleball, okay. Is this related to pickleball, uh, courts, Jim?
I have friends who?
Hi Jim, I recognize you at this time. Is this related to the pickleball courts idea?
Yeah.
And you're muted.
But I know they, they take their own court, uh, take their own nets. I don't know.
Okay, we're gonna move on. So running track around Makiki District Park. The last master plan for Makiki District Park was in nineteen ninety-nine. And we basically have everything that's listed that would be included from there. The one thing that was, you know, designated that wasn't installed is a running track around the perimeter of Makiki District Park. Uh, in the past, we have passed a motion in support of both this and writing a new master plan. This new master plan is actually a really good idea as well, if you're supportive of dog parks. Because one of the issues we're hearing is you need a park that's not currently utilized for other things. But if we were to say, like, dog park in the new master plan, that's one way to start working towards that. But we're talking about years of time, if we were to go that route. Um, so we've already passed a resolution as a board supporting a running track around the perimeter as the master plan designated. And I just wanted to bring this up again to hear if there's any thoughts, people for or against. Uh, in my personal experience, uh, before, uh, I moved to like this half of like town, I was like running half marathons and stuff. It was good areas. I was running a lot, uh, and I barely run here. Um, when I do run, I almost trip on the sidewalks all the time at night, because I don't have good eyes. And I don't really have time to run during the days of someone who works full-time. So for me, this would be a pretty big game changer. I'm not sure if other people have other thoughts on, um, running track. Do you don't like the idea of it? Maybe it takes my green air.
I mean, would it just be in this?
It'd be the perimeter of the park there.
That'd be great.
Okay, yes, Nathan?
I was gonna say, uh, in favor of said track, because there's already like, the perimeter of the park is already well worn down, people who already run around the parks.
Oh, I'm among those people, but I can't really see, and it's easy to trip on stuff during the night.
So really, the, the track would be kind of formalizing what already happens and making it safer for those of us.
There are enough routes that we better have a ten-foot wide area there. I, I run, I run the park, but there are enough routes on various places that I don't think I'd do it in low light.
Anyway, you still think it's all that?
That infrastructure and, and then to end it up, you gotta cross over that.
Yeah. Uh, Richard, you recognized that this time.
Uh, how's my audio? Can you hear me okay? Does it sound like?
Richard, loud and clear. Thank you for asking.
Okay, very good. Yeah, I just wanna, I'm concerned about the, uh, the hazard that's, that might present, people going in and out, crossing through the running track. That, that's my comment.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, well, I don't think we have a motion on this at this time, just some pre-form discussion on what sort of things you wanna see for the park, unless there is a motion.
Do we have a call, yeah?
Okay, we're gonna move on to other recreational, uh, equipment in Makiki Park. So it's exercise equipment. Anything else you can think of as recreation that we wanna discuss for park usage at this time? Board members, members of the public? Please go ahead.
I guess, uh, this would be the great time to bring up lighting, because lighting here sucks. We need, um, more lighting so that folks can take their, uh, kids who actually play at the playground past, you know, six o'clock. Uh, I know, I think Corinne might have more to speak on that, if she's available. But, uh, yeah, I mean. but yeah, it's just, yeah, once, like during winter, when it hits five o'clock, like you just can't take your kids to the park.
Yeah. The problem about that is the birds. Birds get attracted by the lighting and do crazy things. So you need to make sure the lighting is sealed.
Yeah.
But that's just, that's the cost.
And we are getting pretty free form, but I'm going to, just to keep us on track. When you do have a question, please address the chair or raise your hand because that'll keep us a little bit less free form and maybe more on target. Nathan, you recognized again if you want to speak. Okay, then I have something to add on this one. Nathan, I believe you had requested something related to lighting for the under the overpass related to a, the skate park. Can you maybe elaborate on the skate park issue?
Well, currently it's like, I mean, even worse than our playground because, you know, it's underneath the freeway. Well, not sorry, not underneath the freeway. It's underneath the overpass, the Kamauku overpass. It goes over the freeway. So it gets incredibly dark there incredibly fast. And it's a very well-used skate park. The skaters there who do use it have to bring their own like generators and lighting to use the skate park. And, you know, it gets dark so fast that homeless and other folks use the area for drugs. The skaters that have to routinely clean the skate park of needles amongst other things. So it'd be great if we could support our youth and, and our skate park. It's like the only skate park in Pro.
Yeah, this side of downtown.
Yeah. And, you know.
Nathan, in our, in our professional meetings, we're talking about shielding lighting. Is it an area that would be adequately shielded just by the nature of where it is at?
Absolutely.
We won't laborly bind anyone with that one because we're not sure, but it's good to know.
But then, and then, I mean, also like right next to that, right? The little walkway that goes underneath our, underneath Kamauku, that's not lit. It's incredibly hairy place to walk through when trying to cross Kamauku.
Okay. Well, I think that covers it for these items. Last one was consideration for alternate uses for Makiki Mini Park. So some of the things that have been raised before, we potentially discussed is whether this park really offers any purpose right now. It seems to attract a lot of crime and other issues for the immediate neighbors. Is this something we're interested in maybe seeing closed down or replaced with some other sort of public resource? Any thoughts on this?
I also have a question. What is Makiki Park?
So Peacoine Mini Park, it's one of the ones I presented on. I'm going to just bring this up anyway because that could be a useful use of slides. It's this park. So it's small, very lightly used. When it is used, it's mostly encampments, several types of criminal activity. One of the reasons I thought it'd be really good for a dog park is it brings some life to the area and would deter other potential uses. You know, the sky's the limit. Neighborhood board, we can like suggest different things. We could suggest anything from the state considering for Calhalla is if there's already people there anyway. Maybe as least a shelter, we could talk about putting public housing there, community gardens or all sorts of other things. I recognize you at this time.
Put a public bathroom put in to use, showers and everything.
Yeah.
I know the community not going to want it, but at least if they keep clean, it kind of gets your emotional state back in order. I feel bad because, you know, they use that sink over there to take a bathroom. I mean, we have this park. It's not pretty. It's bathroom right over here. But whilst they want to take a bath, there's no bathrooms in Honolulu. They can go to McDonald's or Walmart and of course, they're not going to let them in there.
Interesting point.
Sounds dumb, but it needs somebody to take a shower.
So something that's been discussed in this meeting before was lower Makiki locations for can't remember, sanitary areas. We call them, what do you remember what they called them, Nathan? Do you remember the term that's used? It's basically like public cleaning areas for everyone. Because what I'll note about the area is, you know, a lot of.
Car wash, bicycles, that kind of stuff.
Not quite. I think we went slightly far afield on that one. That's an interesting thing. We want to be able to poll the immediate neighbors though, to see what they would think of such an idea. But we, we should be thinking critically because it's already an area that sees some of the highest levels of poverty, drug use and other types of things like that. We want to think about things that you deter that or limit the negative impacts of what's already there. Those are types of conversations that we can continue to have. But I wanted to bring that up because this is a park that I've never seen a single person ever use.
I don't think most people know it so far. I mean, it's gated off and is it actually a park? It's not like one of those old where you have a gas station there and, you know, it leaped into the ground. Like there's some abandoned lots that I know people use this park to get some other side, right? Like you can't build anything without cleaning it up first. I always wondered if that park, because it just seemed like such an odd place, like somebody in the past has said, made it a park.
If you want to bring these things up there, Richard, can you come up to the mic? All right. Well, do we have any motions or further board discussion we might want to see done there? Oh, Richard, please go ahead.
Yes, hi. Thank you, Richard. You know, it's a great idea. I mean, it's, it's a compassionate idea to have a sanitation station there. But it would attract, attract the homeless people and the neighbors would not appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So one thing I have had a conversation with and I'm trying to figure out what the purpose of it would be because you don't just do something to do something, right? Is a joint neighborhood board meeting with neighboring boards, try to get everyone from downtown Honolulu to talk about the topic homelessness. Because one of the reasons why we're seeing so little done in my opinion is because of the fact that everyone feels that they do something in their community, they're hurting their community for the benefit of the neighboring areas. And that's sort of like prisoner's dilemma or like tragedy of the commons viewpoint. I think it really impoverishes all of us. And there's an obvious solution to it and it's that you coordinate, right? And so, you know, we bring this up all the time and we're okay with doing a little thing here and there. We're, we're a community with a big heart. We also don't feel like we want to be taken advantage of. And it feels like if every community can get behind some small initiatives in their own area, we all do that, we'd all benefit. So it's one thing that's, I've talked to other neighborhood board chairs about. You know, designating areas for like Calhalla is something being proactive about the best locations, might not be it. Before, it's kind of imposed by the state because they want to close up public comment because of the fact that nothing's getting done and the public's always opposed to every idea. But if every neighborhood has a proactive say and we all do it at the same time, maybe we get past them. That's the hope. But again, this is not me wanting to slide something through without community discussion. Instead, it's about us wanting to front load discussions. So anyone watching this at home, afraid I'm trying to slip a Calhalla in the community? I'm doing the exact opposite, but you can still send angry emails to my wife. I think that closes out for considerations of alternative uses for Corinne. Oh, we do have Corinne. Please, Corinne, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to voice support to your idea of getting other neighborhoods involved and I hope that you can convince Manoa to participate in such a discussion. Oh, and then I just, I guess one more quick comment. I the park is already a homeless encampment, so I don't see how a hygiene station would make it any worse.
Your point is well taken. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to unfinished business. But before we do, actually, I moved something on the agenda. So we actually had to do something slightly different first. We're going to move back to the filling of vacancies. Can you tell us a quorum check real quick?
Yes. Hey, Paul, if you're there and you can give us, give us a thumbs up or let us know that you can hear us okay.
Thumbs up. Can you, you unmuted? Okay, I'll take that as a yes. So do we have a motion to accept Ranger to the board? Did I pronounce your name correctly? Nomination? I'm so sorry. Do we have a nomination? Yeah, we have a nomination from John. Thank you very much. All right. Would you please give us a roll call?
Yes. The nomination is for Sam Granger to the sub-district one vacancy. It was made by a member Steelquist. Baldwin, Ranger. Carson.
Granger.
Char, Ranger. Arden, Fujinaka, Kewanoo. You're, you're muted, Richard.
Now, we just have one choice. We have two. People are saying Granger.
Yeah, sorry. It's silly. Even though there's only one nominee, you still have to say the last name. I know it's a little silly.
All right, Granger.
Thank you, Richard. Blake?
Ranger.
Pogima?
Ranger.
Laka Laka Matapuna, Lee?
Ranger.
Nakamoto? Peck?
Ranger.
Solasa? Steelquist?
Yeah, Ranger.
Ross?
Ranger, vote number nine.
Yes, we have 10 votes for member, or 10 Ranger.
If you're ready, if you, wouldn't mind coming up, we need to have you take an oath of office real briefly. I'm going to recess. Sure, or you can send. I think sending is fine. Yeah, yeah, there is. So they've agreed to pay for the sign.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support.
That I will faithfully support.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Hawaii.
Of the state of Hawaii.
The charter and laws.
Charter and laws.
Of the city and county of Honolulu.
Of the city and county of Honolulu.
And the provisions of the neighborhood plan.
Provisions of the neighborhood plan.
That will conscientiously.
Conscientiously.
And impartially discharge my duties.
Conscientiously and impartially discharge my duties.
To the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
As a member of the neighborhood board.
As a member of the neighborhood board.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
All right, congrats.
Thank you. Thank you all.
And you should come and take a seat with your.
Over here. We can sit you right over here.
Collecting is by the pub. You guys are for. Ready? Yes.
Congratulations. Welcome to the board.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. We call back to order. I want to check again for filling of vacancies. We also have a vacancy for sub-district three. Is there anyone interested in filling a vacancy at this time? Chair, yes. Oh, yes. Hey, Claire? Would you be interested in filling our vacancy?
I'd like to come back on after like two weeks, two week board members.
Okay, would you mind coming up and judging yourself? We actually had quite a turnover since the last time, so. So I am going to have to keep us to 60 seconds for an introduction.
Okay, ready?
Ready?
Claire Santos. I'm a registered nurse, lived in this very sub-district for the past 31 years. I have served briefly on the neighborhood board last year. But due to procedural considerations and professional commitments, it was best to put that on a back burner. And now I'm kind of retired, so I have time and commitment. I'm very interested in health and safety issues and affordable housing and homeless. And I'm a dog lover, so yes, to dog park.
All right. Thank you very much for your time. Is there any questions from board members at this time? I think I saw a hand go up. Let's see. No, something else. All right. Well, assuming she hasn't moved in the previous three, no, seven months. We're all good?
Yes.
Do we have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Claire Santos.
Okay, to vote yes, you would say Santos. So could you please bring us through a roll call? And you go with Mr. Granger in the roll call?
Yes.
Don't say Granger.
Okay, so the nomination was made by member Lee for Claire Santos to fill the sub-district three vacancy. Baldwin?
Santos.
Carson?
Santos.
Char?
Santos.
Arden? Fujinaka? Kewanoo?
Santos.
Blake?
Santos.
Pogima?
Santos.
Laka Laka Matapuna? Lee?
Santos.
Nakamoto? Peck?
Santos.
Solasa? Steelquist? Ranger?
Santos.
Ross?
Santos.
The nomination is carried out and with 11, or 11 votes for Claire Santos.
Okay, recess.
We did this online the last.
Yeah, real, yeah. By having just raised your right hand and repeat after me this time. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support.
That I will faithfully support.
Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Hawaii.
Of the state of Hawaii.
The charter and laws.
The charter and laws.
Of the city and county of Honolulu.
Of the city and county of Honolulu.
And the provisions of the neighborhood plan.
And the provisions of the neighborhood plan.
That will conscientiously.
And will conscientiously.
And impartially discharge my duties.
And impartially discharge my duties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As a member of the neighborhood board.
As a member of the neighborhood board.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Claire, where would you like to sit?
I'll just go on the other side of Chuck since my stuff isn't with you.
Perfect. Okay. I call the meeting back to order. We're moving on to unfinished business. The first item is traffic concerns near Chick-fil-A on South Baritania. An email I received from Lindsay Chambers, who did present to us previously, is that they have been doing ongoing contact with DTS and Chick-fil-A. My understanding of where we're at right now is that Chick-fil-A has agreed to cover the costs. The sign, the issue as it personally stands, is that people in the residential area on South Baritania before Chick-fil-A are getting blocked in by people waiting in line to go Chick-fil-A. It's created problems on two fronts. One, getting out, which is less of a big deal. But two, getting back in, because there are people have two options. They wait in line for Chick-fil-A to get to their apartment or they go the next lane and try to cut through and then often deal with very aggravated hungry people not wanting to let them get into their apartment. So the proposed solution as it stands is to make a custom sign saying, please don't block the driveway. DTS has said that they're not interested in funding such a not a regular sign and maybe they're not allowed to fund a sign that's not to code or something like that. Chick-fil-A has now agreed to pay for the cost of the sign, but DTS has not moved on confirming whether they would do it. As it stands, there's no discernible, doesn't mean there isn't one, no discernible financial impact to the city. There are two possible things we can do here and we can do as a board, as potential action. We could say, have a motion to say just, DTS let them put the sign in, go forward on this. Another one is we could call for a study or something like that. Those are the two most obvious. I'm opening up us to discussion to see if there's other potential solutions we want to consider. I'm opening discussion up at this time to board members. Please go ahead, Claire.
Since I drive through there all the time or walk through there, Chick-fil-A did, does have signs up, please do not block the driveway. They're, they're on the ground, so those kind of.
How long have those ones been there?
Several weeks, I'm sure.
It's in the last few weeks?
Yeah.
I haven't seen them.
It's those V-shaped standing tents. There's two of them. Please do not block the driveway. It's those V-shaped standing tents, there's two of them, please do not block the driveway. Not that people pay attention, but they are there, they're.
They're kind of low.
They're low, but you see them at your eye level when you're the driver.
Let's see the most recent information I've received.
I'll have to take a picture for you next time I walk through tomorrow morning.
Okay, so we were scheduled, Lindsay and I do a follow-up last week. We got, to a little sidetracked, do the Tragedy on PPo. Unfortunately, didn't hear back from Lindsay since January thirtieth, so I didn't get a more immediate update. But it didn't seem like there are any signs as of two weeks ago, but you said a few weeks, so maybe that's the time scale if there was installation. Any further discussion?
You know, I have seen people come from the far-left lane of Baritania, or from McDonald's and fly across Baritania, so we still do have that consideration of safety.
Yeah, please go ahead, Chuck. Yeah, in my recollection, in talking to Kevin Fong, and yeah, Kevin Fong, who's the community relation, public relation person for Chick-fil-A here. He had mentioned that I think DTS might have a problem with the length, I mean, the height of the sign. Previous to that, the original signs were kind of low, so people driving by, especially at night, or when it gets dark, couldn't see it. So they're proposing to make it higher, so I'm not sure if that's an item that DTS is still wrestling with. But as far as them paying for it and having it done as soon as possible, I'm all for that, because it's just holding up everything. And these residents there are getting more and more frustrated, and you know, we may have a potential accident happening.
I'm just gonna pause the discussion for a second on this topic. Well, I'm gonna ask you if Denise Matsubara has an update from DTS that might help illuminate a little bit what's going on.
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Okay, so I just put it in the chat that DTS will allow the installation of signage on the city and county right away to be funded and maintained by Chick-fil-A pending the completion and approval of an MOA. So they would have to work out all the details with Chick-fil-A, and they would have to engage in a memorandum of agreement on it.
Denise, in your perspective, would like a board motion or in support of closing an MOA have any impact on accelerating this, or is this really basically just between two parties at this point?
You know, I don't think it would harm it. I think it probably would help, so. Yeah, I think to encourage the action.
Would anyone like to make a motion in support of a, a motion saying that the Makiki Neighborhood Board supports an MOA between DTS and Chick-fil-A regarding signage on South Baritania?
Yes, question.
Please go ahead.
Has anyone raised any negative implications of putting up a sign? I mean, is there safety issues related to?
So Chuck, sure, there might be some issue related to height. I imagine if there's height requirements, that probably has something to do with safety and visibility. I would imagine that's why there would be some sort of restrictions on that. That's the best I can infer. That's all I've heard.
Right, okay.
And then signs have a slight increase in risk for pedestrians, of course. All right, any further discussion, motions?
Yes, Chair, I'd like to make the motion, but you said it more eloquently.
Okay, I'm gonna repeat something and see if that's your motion then. A motion for the Makiki Laura Punchball Tantilis Neighborhood Board number ten in support of a memorandum of agreement between Department of Transportation Services and the Honolulu Chick-fil-A on South Baritania regarding a signage related to, a signage on South Baritania. I'm not gonna define the signage at this time. I don't want to get it wrong. So do you make that motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Claire, okay, thank you very much. All right, we had some discussion on this. Let me ask, is anyone opposed or abstaining from this motion in support of a memorandum of agreement? If not, I'm going to see if we can pass by unanimous consent. Hearing none, the motion passes. Is there any further discussion on the traffic concerns near Chick-fil-A? Hearing none, we're gonna move on to excessive noise. First issue on excessive noise, vehicles. This is one time we potentially bring up, for example, the drag racing on Round Top Drive.
I'm sorry, you're asking for a motion, or?
No, no, I'm just asking, is there any discussion on excessive noise from vehicles at this time? Yes, please go ahead.
I guess I would like to know, like, what are the actions we can take for excessive noise, similar to the same way that we need to be caught in the act? Is it something that we can? I don't know, the possibility to have it recorded, or anything that helps at all, but just I'd like to know what options we do have to deal with the excessive noise. I mean, it's definitely a constant problem that we have. We've had residents, actually, they decide to stop renting certain locations up on panels because the noise is too high, just like that. So I'm just putting it out there that, you know, this is something that is constantly disrupting neighborhood up on the top side of panel, as they come ripping through it, worrying and warning. And it wakes everyone up, you know, there's a lot of young children, things that are up there now, and you're like getting woken up, so it's something that definitely is a problem. And I would open up the board to know what kind of potential solutions are available, and potentially to Lieutenant, but I think he's gone. To find out what feedback you would have for that particular situation, knowing that it does go hand in hand with the same problem of speed and safety.
Any further discussion on this point? Please go ahead.
Lots of things have happened there. Whoever repainted the road so it wouldn't be breaking loose, and then they found that it was properly the angle of sight that actually drove cars off the road, so that it was a thing. We put some paint on it, slowed down, and wore off. So, I mean, it's we could have three teams waiting there, intercepting their radio calls. Tell, okay, someone please. There are all kinds of things you can do, but it's not easy, and they're well organized. Some type of, some type of, two-way, right?
Yeah, it's pretty consistent. I mean, one suggestion that was raised from a neighbor was potentially having an officer stationed at one of the lower lookouts. You know, for the duration of how long to get stationed. With, you know, the ability of that down the bottom, they can still go to any call-out, but their presence there would definitely deter the racism, you could say, a cop, you know. So, again, something I would like to discuss.
So, as Chair, my being provocative right now, it's what I'm trying to move us towards is a meeting where we get the prosecutors, officers like briefed, and they come present, we start to have a discussion with them. I don't know what the outcome is, but what's always true of the neighborhood boards, and I imagine it's also true of the Talons Association, which used to be an umbrella of the type.
I have it.
Yeah. It's what you bring to it. So, the solutions can't necessarily be harebrained schemes. We actually just have to figure out a piece the pieces together. And what I always say, the greatest strength of our neighborhood boards is that we get our electeds and government officials to attend, and everything stayed here is on the record. And those two tools alone get us part of the way there. It makes the talk substantive. But we then have to figure out what we put upon that substance and get done. So, I welcome that conversation. We're moving towards it in April.
Okay.
I'm gonna move on now, unless there's nothing else on this, to fireworks. Any further discussion on firework noise? You know, I thought this was gonna be a much bigger topic following New Year's, but it has been a little more quiet recently. Maybe the supply ran out. I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that. We'll move on to roosters. Any further discussion? I know this is one that Paul offered. So I see Richard's hand up. Richard, is this on fireworks or roosters?
Fireworks.
Please go ahead.
Fireworks, vehicles, we discussed this extensively in the past, and basically ramp a brick wall as far as doing anything substantive about it. You know, we've talked about decibel meters that the police would have. And that there's really no solution, and it is aggravating. I live half a block from the freeway. And we hear motorcycles, loud, you know, cars blasting down the freeway, not every night, but sometimes two or three times a night. And I just wish there was a solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, we're gonna move on to roosters. Paul, do you have anything to add to this one?
Only that I hope we get some teeth into something to help this woman who's still feeding them on Mahiki Street dealt with.
This is a good time to bring up the 3-1-1 app. Honolulu 3-1-1 is a great way to report things. A lot of issues we run into, there's someone in the city that is supposed to help, probably willing to help. They might be very overworked, but they're willing to help, but you're not quite sure how to reach them. And I do recommend using the Honolulu 3-1-1 app in order to be able to report different types of things. It's very handy. You can like sort by things like roosters, et cetera, to file reports. If, is any takeaway here, it's raise your voice, use your voice, don't just rely on the neighborhood board, we want to be a partner. But reports do get back to us. We hear from the police about reported crimes. We hear back from Denise representing the mayor about things like this too. So please do report it on the phone or some of these applications.
Actually, I have a.
Yes, please go ahead.
I don't know if Councilman Say or Representative Blon is still on, but I always use the 3-1-1 app, but with varying levels of satisfaction. I use it to report there's just constantly large bulky items that are there, thrown away at the side of Makiki Drive. I use it to report it, and I actually recently got a call from the city county telling me that, don't use the 3-1-1 app. The faster route is to just talk to, send an email to the state, because the state has jurisdiction over bulky material, bulky things that are left on the side of the road. So I did that. And then I got an email from the state saying, don't do that. So, someone has to clarify exactly what is, you know, what is going where in terms of when we send a request through 3-1-1 app. Who is, you know, what is the jurisdictional route? And, and you know, if it's, if this is, if the 3-1-1 app is not the most efficient way to communicate, then what is?
So I do think that might be off topic for the excessive noise, but we're moving into community reports. Let's maybe look into that, and feel free to raise it as a question to Denise a little bit later. Anything else on excessive noise at this time? Corinne, you're recognized at this time.
I wanted to say something about 3-1-1, but I guess it's not the time.
It was related to, they don't want to annoy, so it's the time though. Okay, we're gonna move on then to community reports. Chuck, do you have a brief update for the neighborhood security?
Yes, we're still focusing on education regarding safety and security in the neighborhood. So we recently did a presentation last week, and we have another one coming up this week. And we also are in communication with Roosevelt to do something for their students, so we're finalizing the details on that. But I just wanted to give a tip, a safety and security tip. This is for everybody, and including kids. One of the things that you need to be aware and let them know is don't walk alone, when they walk home from school especially, you know, always try to walk with somebody or with a group. And the second thing is, try to walk toward the oncoming traffic, instead of having the traffic oncoming from the back, so you can see who's coming toward you. And also, just be very, very vigilant and cognizant of your surroundings at all times. And in line with that, what happens is, a lot of times, you know, we're on our phone, we're looking down, we got our earbuds on, and you know, we're totally oblivious to everything. And that makes you a prime target for anybody that's gonna do anything to you, rob you, take you, whatever. So those are my tips for this week, or this week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any further discussion on the neighborhood security watch? Hearing none, we're gonna move on to the Waukulu Metropolitan Planning Organization. Give an update for us.
Yes.
Excellent.
Finally got a hold of them. And they said, oh yeah, put your name on. So I'm now being advised of being, you know, being the first week of every month. And they just published the 2023 annual report. It's large and all kinds of things, and they do all kinds of things. They it is a group of nine people. The head of four special needs communities on Tantilis. And the city council on Tantilis. So eight people, then they have a joint, they elected by the age, the ninth person, the ninth, ninth person, I think. It's been around since I don't know nineteen eighties, something like that. And this board was one of the original boards that joined it, board number ten, it's been on there forever and ever and ever. And so, it's us. But they have an annual report. They also get outside federal funds. They have very nice engineering transportation, they're good things that you belong to. I'm glad they're thinking of us against all states.
Excellent. Okay, thank you so much for that report. I'm seeing we have ten minutes to direct to close things out. This is rough, and I apologize, but we wanted to have a focus meeting. I think we did a lot of really productive things. So we're gonna move on to resident and community concerns. These are things that are not on the agenda, can be raised at this time. Does anyone have anything to bring up at this time? Danny? Yes, please, can you sit down and introduce yourself?
Okay. Thank you, Chair. My name is Cyrus Howe. I have the pleasure of serving as the Makiki Community Garden President. And I, like Chair Ross, receive a lot of emails and correspondence about all the various unlawful behavior that occurs in our garden, in part because it's very dark and it's easy to engage in illicit activities and our, you know, we understand when we sign up that it's a coexistence, it's a community with people of all backgrounds, but what is becoming increasingly worse are the break-ins and the burglary, destruction of private property, and the theft. And so I've been in touch with Representative Bellotti and Councilman Say's offices. I appreciate both of you for getting back to us. I guess I wanted to take this opportunity to do two things. One is to maybe follow up with Representative Bellotti about the community policing training or workshop or a meeting like that, maybe late March? That could be socialized in the March meeting of the neighborhood board.
I think Bellotti's on you, but you can continue.
And well, and number two would be just to ask my fellow residents to continue using the 3-1-1 app, or whatever means it is to report, to take pictures, document, and report anything that you see that's even in the perimeter of the, you know, garden. There are public health concerns with people defecating, where people are growing their vegetables and things like that. Public indecency where, you know, kids are playing. And the sinks at that public restroom recently had their plumbing taken out, I believe by parks, because they were being rerouted by people with hoses into the stalls in order to shower. So if there is an opportunity to consider retrofitting those facilities with showers, maybe one of the two toilet stalls in each of those, expanding the bathroom in some way. I would be keen to engage in those discussions.
Cyrus, thank you very much for bringing this up to us. You know, we're definitely concerned about the usage of the park, and it's one of our big things we can care about, as you can see. So thank you for taking the time. If there's like a direct request in terms of things you'd like to see on our agenda, you can reach out to me, my email is on it, and I'd love to work with you to collaborate on this.
Okay, I'll be in touch.
And I'm gonna recognize, I guess I recognize Bellotti's time. Please go ahead, Professor.
Thank you, Cyrus, and thank you for reaching out to us. I'll echo two things. First, yes, I want to reemphasize reporting on the 3-1-1 app. And I know it's frustrating to hear sometimes in different offices, no, it's not our jurisdiction, it's someone else's. It is important, the more you report it, the more it gets onto the radar screens of the police department and all the other, you know, related agencies that will pay attention. So please continue to report, and if you get back that feedback that it's not us, it's not somewhere else, just keep hitting up all of your elected officials, the 3-1-1 app. And that's a way to just kind of make sure that information gets out. Secondly, to Cyrus, I would like to commit to sometime in late March to set up a training session. I know that Chuck Lee and his group with the neighborhood board are working in other areas in the community, but I will reach out to the community coaching team and try to identify a time that we find a city training for the gardens area. And if we can somehow coordinate it with the farmers market that happens regularly on Thursdays, I think that would be a good synergistic activity for us to do as a project together. So I will work on that, Cyrus.
Thank you so much.
Excellent, thank you so much. I'm going to recognize Keegan at this time. Thank you for being here for this meeting. I believe you wanted to update us on an affordable housing development.
Yeah, aloha, everyone. Thank you, Chair, members of the board. My name is Keegan Flaherty. I'm here on behalf of Ikenakea Development. You might have recognized us, we just finished a 100% affordable Kupuna rental housing project in Moiliili called Hale Makanoo Moiliili, which is serving low income Kupunas right now. But I'm just here to make a quick announcement. I've been going around to the different neighborhood boards because we're going to be hosting a town hall on two of our newest affordable residential communities, Kukala Hale Place and Pamoiliili Apartments. You know, we want to be sensitive to the community and, you know, engage in discussions and answer any questions, share the project plans and details at that town hall. And, you know, we want to do that and come back to the neighborhood board for the April or hopefully sooner, maybe March meeting, just depending on you guys' schedule, to have that discussion afterwards with you guys. But we want to provide a space to really dive into the details and, you know, allow time to go over everything and just, you know, solicit feedback, because we want to be sensitive. We're sincere about that, and we need housing. And so this meeting, this town hall is at the Central Union Church on March 4th at 6 o'clock. There's parking on site, and I've actually sent the flyer over to Logan, who's uploaded it to the Google Drive for everyone to take a look at. And we're also, we've also sent out mailers too, to the surrounding residents, so.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut you off on that, we're at the.
Yeah, yeah, that was the last part, but. Yeah.
But we'll put you on the agenda, and I'll make sure people see the flyer, and I appreciate you for coming out.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, so unfortunately, we're just really not having the time to be able to get through a lot of really important reports and board business. We'll just go as long as we can, we've got like four minutes. So let's start with Mayor Rick Blandiari's. I'm sorry, yes, okay. Jim, you're recognized at this time, I apologize. Jim, are you there?
Yes.
Please go ahead, Jim.
Okay, the issue tonight that I'd like to bring up is an overgrown situation all the way up Tantless Drive from, from exiting Papakalea. It is, it has not been cut by the city and county in over a year. For the 27 or 28 years that I've been around, they used to cut it about every four or five months, and it is literally seven foot on either side of the road. It is dangerous for walkers, bikers and cars. I mean, it's very dangerous. I have contacted, you know, Say's office, I've contacted the maintenance people at city and county, and I can't quite understand why they stopped cutting the grass on either side of, on either side of Tantless. And I just, it's, it's beyond me. And, and it is a very dangerous situation. And I'd like to know if the neighborhood board could do something about it.
Would you be able to be exactly specific on the location? Perhaps if you can use Google Maps and drop a pin and then share that.
It's, it's, it's all, it's on either side of Tantless Drive all the way up.
So I understand, so most of the people on the board do know that location? This is mostly to help us communicate that to government. It would be a tremendous help.
Say that again.
It would just be a tremendous help helping us explain that to others. I think a lot of us here know that area well. If you're able to drop a pin and then share that in the chat, it would be a huge help. I'll recognize you in a second.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Ranger, you're recognized at this time.
I would just like to add that there was actually a fire on August 23rd, 23, up on that lookout area. And I believe that was due to a cigarette and the overgrowth that was occurring was put out. But there was someone in public, they managed to film it from down on the bottom, and you know, it was pretty, pretty bad. That was too far after the now, so I was definitely a pot concern. So just like to emphasize that there is a high safety issue.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to end the resident community concerns there. We have time for one, one report only, it looks like for this. Denise, I'd like to recognize you at this time, thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much, Chair Ross. So there was about a dozen follow-ups from the last meeting, but we covered.
I can imagine.
The most important one, which was the dog park, and I relayed the information from DPR on the size. So I want to go through this quickly, but cover some of the concerns that you had. I first want to let everyone know, I put the link for the mayor's newsletter in the chat. There's also going to be some changes to the bus service. They said it does affect neighborhood 10, so I did put that link in, in the chat as well. So getting back to some of the concerns that were raised from the last meeting, starting with the Makiki skate park and the lighting, I did put a response in the chat that due to its close proximity to the freeway, DPR is consulting with the Department of Facilities and Maintenance and the Department of Transportation Services on the feasibility of installing lights at Makiki District Park, at the skate park. And with regards to the influx of needles and syringes, syringes in the surrounding area, my office did reach out to the Hopey Health and Harm Reduction Center to request assistance with syringe disposal. And they said that they will visit the skate park to better understand the needs of the community there. And then they left a number to call, which I can put in the chat. With regards to Makiki Stream, the DFM initiated a service request to clear Makiki Stream in the area Makai of Kalakaua Avenue. Maintenance to clear the stream of debris and vegetation was last conducted in October 2023 in conjunction with stored property ordinance enforcement. The stored property ordinance and sidewalk nuisance ordinance enforcement are conducted about once a week in the Kalakaua Avenue bus stop areas near South King and along South King Street in the vicinity of the Inha Park and Makiki Stream. My office also requested services, requested that IHS visit the area, and they will continue to visit that area to engage the homeless there. They visit, they reported that they visit that area about twice a week, and they will continue to engage with those in the area. And as you all know with homeless, the key is getting them engaged, because this is all voluntary, it's on a voluntary service. Okay, the next item was sidewalk maintenance and improvements. Chair, I believe you raised that at the last minute, at the last meeting. Sidewalk improvements and construction of curb cuts for ADA accessibility are performed under the CIP funds managed by Department of.
I was just thanking, I was just thanking them for doing it. I didn't need a follow-up, I was just saying, good job.
Oh, okay, great, great, wonderful. They'd love to hear that. Okay. Okay, moving on to the next item that was brought up, because you, you had a whole list for me.
I did, I got, I got, I got a lot of people emailing me.
Yeah, so holiday trash was one of the things you brought up. And so we did hear back from ENV, and they advise that refuse collection does not occur on Christmas or New Year's days. These are the only two holidays observed by the city refuse collectors throughout the year. And unfortunately, these, once it's missed, they're not made up. They do post their schedule, they encourage everyone to hold on to your items until the next scheduled pickup. So if your, if the community feels like their pickup missed more than just on that holiday, then we need to know. But that's the response from ENV.
Okay.
For Department of Transportation Services, there was a question, I think it was resident Van Wish, Wishing grad? Regarding Prospect and Magazine Streets. He requested a stop sign. DTS will conduct an evaluation to determine if additional traffic controls are warranted at the intersection of magazines and Prospect Streets, and will inform the board of the status of their findings upon the completion of their investigation. Chick-fil-A traffic recovered. The next one was Prospect Street and Alapi. A request was made on the update of the safety measure. DTS.
There are hate collisions or reported incidences there.
Okay. The request that was passed along to them was an update on the safety measure installed, and has the feedback been positive?
Okay.
That, that was what was reported to DTS, and their response was that the installation of an always stop control occurred in December 2023 and received favorable feedback from the community as well from council member DeSantis Town. DTS will continue monitoring the area, and as of this date, there are no significant incidents that have been reported at this intersection.
Okay, was there anything else on the report?
So the other items for HPD crimes committed seen by.
Okay.
HPD has asked for their money.
I do think I'm actually going to have to just cut it for, for time. I'm probably going to have to adjourn the meeting. Denise, thank you very much for that. I would be remiss not to bring two things up. So the first one was, it was the follow-up on that grass on both sides of Tantless that we just heard. We really would like a follow-up, I had on my list. And the second is the issue reported earlier from fountains at Makiki. The noise concerns are escalating, so if we could do some sort of mediation services, that would be requested. They did update me that now some of the people in that area may be in response to complaints about noise. There have been chucking of like rocks and debris into the pool of the park where children are at the fountains at Makiki. So there's like actual hazards being thrown at the heads of children there. And so some sort of mediation response besides them just calling 911 and not getting much seems to be increasingly urgent. And I know we have to adjourn, but I could not bring that one up.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll email you the, the email chain on that one.
Okay, thank you. And I, I just want to, before we finish, I want to apologize to the gentleman that had the unfortunate experience with the 3-1-1 app. If somehow you could get me his name, we really want to follow up, and I apologize on behalf of the city for, you know, his, his poor experience with whatever he reported.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Share your name.
Oh yeah, sorry, yeah, that was me, Hikojima.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'm Hikojima, I was the one who made that comment.
And, and is there a way that you could leave your contact information with Chair Ross so that we could get it and follow up with you?
He has. I am 80% sure, give me one second. Is it, is it actually, yes, I do have.
Okay.
All right, I'll be following up. Okay, with that, I must adjourn. So thank you, everyone, for attending this meeting. It is 8:29 PM, we are adjourned.